This is the Waukegan Area School District Board of Education meeting.
I will keep the president's comments brief on that. We are a few minutes after the scheduled starting time. Hopefully Dr. Dean will be able to get our connectivity on the overheads. Before we get started, I would like to introduce Abigail, who is our student representative. And if you would be kind enough before we call the order just to let everybody know a little bit about your, what class you're in, how you became involved, and what you might expect out of this experience.
Yeah, alright, so my name's Abby. As you already heard, I'm a junior. I'm actually my class president. Honestly, I'm not sure why I was chosen. It's just, it's an honor to be here. I'm very, very involved in my class. I'm a class president, I'm on student council, I'm on link crew, I'm in Madrigals, I'm in a lot of stuff around the school. And I'm just really hoping to kind of learn how board meetings are run and kind of like what goes into running our school. And I hope I can really impactful and helpful to our students, make sure they enjoy their time here a little bit more.
Very good. Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Welcome.
Before we call the meeting to order, we always have the pledge of allegiance. And as the newest member of the board, all being on voting, I'm going to ask you to please lead us in the pledge.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Let the roll call reflect that all board members, with the exception of Dimitri Martin, are present. Mr. Martin has been excused due to other obligations. Again, my thanks to everyone for their understanding of our original schedule having to be altered due to 14-plus inches of snow. So, with that, I will ask for approval of the agenda.
Subtle.
Motion to approve the agenda as documented is our second. Motion in second. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much. Agenda is approved. We'll go to public comment. This is a time, Abby, that we open it up for any individual from the community or public at large that wishes to address the board. We may not necessarily be able to discuss what they're bringing to us because under statute, we have to have things that are going to be discussed largely documented in the agenda. But it gives the community or students or anybody else the opportunity to bring something to the board or express an opinion.
Okay.
So, with that, is there any public comment? There being none, we're starting to catch up on our agenda. Move on to approval of the minutes. We will, the only minutes we have is a January 8, 2019 regular board meeting.
Subtle.
Motion to approve is our second. Motion in second. Any discussion, correction? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much. Communications. We'll move to the district administrator's report, please.
Thank you, President Johnson. As the tragic shooting in Parkland, Florida took place on this date last year, let us reflect for a moment on the unnecessary loss of life and impact to all those affected by school violence. Thank you. May we continue to move the education of our children forward without the threat of violence. Congratulations to Sophia Puccillo, Noah Kolinsky, J.L. Azwarra, A.J. Nimmer, Sid McClelland, and Emily Bauer. They were the winners of the district spelling bee held in the middle school auditorium on Wednesday, January 16th. They will all be competing in the CISA 5 Northwest Regional Spelling Bee in Wild Rose on February 11th at 1:00 PM. That's actually...
Passed.
Passed. On Thursday, January 3rd, 33 4th through 8th graders participated in the National Geographic District Geography Bee, again, in the middle school auditorium. Top finishers were Sid McClelland, third place, Emily Bauer, school champion, and Logan Jansen, second place. Congratulations to Bill Krosberg, Jen Herb, David Miller, and students Ben Bartel, Griffin Trinrud, Mitchell Trepatuski, and Logan Montgomery for representing the district at the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention in Milwaukee. Also, a special thank you to Neville Motors for sponsoring the classic car restoration class, which featured the 1967 Camaro. The district received a lot of positive attention at the convention. Congratulations also to Anna Luger, Eric Connor, and all the students involved in the Mad Jazzers, who delivered a wonderful performance at the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention conclusion on Friday. The students also delivered an impromptu performance at the M.J. Stevens Restaurant on a trip back home, and it was really very fun.
Very fun.
The winter weather, as we all know, has posed some challenges to the school calendar as of late, but rest assured that the administration will bring forward a plan that will be the least intrusive on summer plans while still ensuring that our staff have sufficient time to deliver the curriculum as intended. And then my final note is just Happy Valentine's Day. I can't think of a more worthy group to spend the day with.
[laughing]
Without specific response, we'll move on to Communications Part B, which is the CEC project presentation.
Okay, I'd like to introduce two 3rd graders, Danny Chicky and Frody Page, who have been working on a project of their choice in their citizenship unit. And they worked on, they both live really close to IRCH school and they walk to school. And they have seen a need in the community, and they are going next week to the Farmington Town Board to present this need. And so their project has really taken on a life of its own and is making some changes. So they have a short presentation coming. Um, I have, can you bring it up?
Could you share it through Google?
Yes.
So what grade are you in?
I'm in 3rd grade and I'm 4th.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Vista.
And I'm Mr. Seifer. I'm in Mr. Seifer's class.
Uh-huh. And have you gone to chain all the way through?
Yeah. He has, but I went to the WLC since 7th grade, and then I thought that this school is, I wanted to check out this school. And I...
Do you like it? How's it going for you?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Good, awesome.
So you may have this in your presentation, but what got you thinking about this as being a correction for your project, or what you're going to be talking about?
What made you think you needed to do this presentation?
Well, right now, we, uh, we have to, we walk to school every day, and we think it, the need of getting a, getting a crosswalk is a high need.
Oh.
And, so...
So, I went to your school and saw some of the presentations, and I was so impressed because there's so many PowerPoints that the students are doing. Did you do this PowerPoint yourself?
Well...
Do you guys know how to do a PowerPoint? Put it all together?
Yeah. I mean, like, we know how to do a slide and...
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that is pretty impressive.
So, while we're waiting for this to come up, so, so you walk to school, and are you finding that it's hard to walk across because of all the buses coming in?
And the traffic coming out, and then...
So you just have to run in between cars to get across?
Pretty much.
We wait until the buses are gone because, um, yeah.
So you don't get...
Yeah.
Or you have to go before the bus has come, huh?
I actually almost got hit by a bus, so now...
You did, and his little brother.
And so now, we have to walk, or we have to wait every day.
Wow.
That doesn't sound very safe as it is right now, yeah?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Okay, so, as you know, we are, um, we made a slide, and my name is Frody Page.
And I'm Danny Chicky.
And we, we walk to school every day. We feel the need that we need a crosswalk put in and a crosswalk path.
Like you already said, we need a, we're getting a, well, planning to get a crosswalk, but to get to our crosswalk, we have to get to the path because right now, um, right now, there's like a lot of snow, so we need you guys to plow that off to get to a crosswalk.
First, get the ma, yeah.
I see, okay.
Uh, steps taken. We have surveyed neighbors, so, um, one day, we went down to the, down to where everyone comes, like, picks up people. And people who live around here, we, or around our school, um, we asked them if, what they think of, uh, if we need a crosswalk put in. And we also said, do we need two on our survey? And they, and 100% said yes.
Whoa.
Yeah. Um, and it was only the people that walked to school though? Well, who live around, yeah, who has kids right now. Uh, we also met with, uh, our Casey Byersdorf, and he is a highway commissioner for the city of Waukegan. And, uh, and he said to always, no matter what, walk against traffic. And he told us where he thinks we should put the sidewalk. And we're falling off that idea.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So you think what he said made sense as to where we...
Yeah.
Was that a picture of him back there?
Um, no. If you, um, that one is...
Down in the bottom corner?
Yeah.
Down in the bottom corner, and then, okay. That's what our survey looked like, and that's someone who we surveyed.
And you put your survey together yourself?
Yeah, well, yeah.
We had a little help from our teacher.
Oh, that's good.
And Ms. Harrow, right? Yeah.
Cool.
That's great.
Yep.
Um, three, we talked to Ms. Harrow about how to get the crosswalk.
How to get to the crosswalk.
Yeah, that's why we're here today. Then we met with the Farmington, the Farmington Town Board. They said it should be near the stop sign, but then we told them what Ms. Casey Byersdorf told us.
Ms. Casey Byersdorf.
Yeah.
Wow.
He said, um, then they, at the end, they said, we should think about where we, where, um, we want to put it, and then on the 18, um...
Stills.
Yeah.
So did the, the members of the Farmington Town Board, were they pretty good to you? Pretty nice to you?
Yeah, they were really nice.
Wow, I bet they were pretty impressed with this.
Yeah.
So you have to go to their next meeting now, too?
Yeah.
Wow, you are just...
Do they serve cookies at their meeting?
No.
Oh, maybe you'll get one, yeah.
Well, I actually, I don't know.
And I do know the chairwoman of the Town Farmington Town Board, Mrs. Murphy, was, said wonderful things about your presentation. She said, we were so well-prepared and so poised, that we had the support.
Yeah. And, so, yeah.
Then we made a plan of where to, at school, where to put the crosswalk path. So we're going to the flagpole, then we're walking, um, on the, on the border of the parking lot. Then we walk right by the road, and then we cross.
And so when, if, yeah, this is the red part right here on there, and then, is that all going to have painted lines?
Well, like, for the path, well, um...
I think it's the next slide.
Oh, next slide.
Yeah, that would be the next slide.
There, okay.
So, we're gonna need, like, something, um, wait, did we skip a slide?
Yeah.
We could go back.
Okay, well, yeah. And finally, we got our presentation at the CEC, the Chain Exploration Center. Um, and, so, we had a zine, and then we had, I had a side, or I mean, a sign, um, that Casey Byersdorf gave us for a donation.
That's the one, the, the triangle with the person walking?
Yeah, well, it's like, yeah.
Uh, whatever.
Got it, man. Okay, guys. So did that presentation go well?
Yeah, it was fun.
Um, in the parking lot, we need a...
We need a crosswalk.
Right there. So, we can't use the sign for the crosswalk that's, um, right by the Y, but we can use it for the one that's in the, um, parking lot.
And so the yellow part, the crosswalk there, that's what the Town of Farmington is going to put in?
Yes.
And you're asking for following the path up to that point in the driveway and then putting a crosswalk from that side of the driveway to the school?
But the, um, but the red line by the, um, that comes out of the school, that should be yellow, but we missed that.
Oh, I think you want, I think it's good because we can see where the path is versus where the crosswalk is. So I think that's very good for me, to be able to see that.
Do you, gentlemen, who live, see where the, like, the circle part is down on the left-hand side? Do you, are your homes down in that area?
My house is actually, um, across the highway.
Oh, okay.
But his house is like, right over there.
Wait, I'm the second house, uh, I'm, so, there's, you see how there's like, a lot of trees?
Yeah.
They got that down, and there's a house right there, and then we're the next house. I'm the next house. And then he keeps on walking.
Then I go to, um, Mr. Glenn's property, then I cross his.
So, are there any boys and girls that go to your school that live, like, above chain school? Like, if you would look at that picture? So, like, if they were coming to school, they'd have to come, walk down, and then they'd have to walk past the school to get to the crosswalk and go back up. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
So is that what, where there was kind of a debate about where to put this?
Yeah, so, but, uh, if we put it by the Y...
Yeah.
We could, or if we, so we would go down this way, and then we would walk up. So we're totally walking across traffic to go, uh, to school.
Uh-huh.
And then when, um, and then when we go home, we're gonna walk, like, um, like, close to the edge of the, and then we can go this way, and we'll keep, well, for a little, um, we'll walk it down the W, then we'll walk on this side of the road, then we'll just go home.
I see, okay.
Well, and if you had people coming from the top of the picture up there, of course, they wouldn't be, there wouldn't be very little traffic, because everybody turns in here. So they probably walk across without much traffic on a regular basis.
Oh, I got it, yeah, they cross, I see. They, they don't need the crosswalk now.
We would be, if we put it by the stop sign, we would be walking with traffic. And if there, um, someone suggested walking around his property, but, um, even if a car did hit us, it would, it would be on his insurance and, and...
That's a good thing, yeah, rather than the school.
I was thinking about that. Well, you guys have done your homework.
So the picture to me, looks like the crosswalk only goes halfway across the road.
That's because there's a, um, tree there, basically.
There's a tree?
It's on the Y.
Because this is all projected.
The yellow part there, the yellow part?
Yeah.
Is that gonna go all the way across the road?
We don't know that. Well, right there is, um, right there is like, uh, so, the yellow, the green-yellow is the road, and then that, and then we would walk to the, the bright, the yellow, and then we would, and then we'd walk home, and then it'd be like, we would walk on the grass.
Do you want to use this and point to this? Would that help you?
And so I, I will say, the map that Mrs. Murphy showed me with this same basic configuration did have the yellow crosswalk go all the way across the road.
Well, and that, that intersection is projected on here, and that doesn't follow exactly the way it is. So, the cross, the crosswalk, now that they show it, probably ends where the road ends, but it's going to be changed if it goes through some of the changes on that Y.
If we go all the way across the road, um, then we would have to walk across the road again, otherwise we would be walking with the gap.
Right, okay.
Wow.
Lots to think about.
Yeah.
So what do you want us to do?
Well, we kind of need you to put a crosswalk in, and then we need you to get the ma, well, we're gonna need you to get the maintenance to put a crosswalk in. And we, and the school has been needing a crosswalk in for a couple of years.
Yeah, because, um, people are backing in to the parking spots, but we want them to go around that thing, that, um, we want them to go with the flow of traffic, otherwise they're just...
That is a good idea.
So, Mr. Dean, what is your suggestion on this? Have you talked to our maintenance staff already, or do we have any suggestions on how to move here?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't foresee any problems with implementing the plan provided. We've got all of the permission in place. So, the only thing that I would offer to you guys, and you guys have done a great job presenting today, is I think rather than having maintenance clear that path, it would be really neat to see Mr. Bear.
I'll break my snowblower off.
A shovel, no, a shovel. That'd be great.
And just to be clear, the Town of Farmington will take care of putting that under crosswalk across the road?
Yeah, yeah.
If the board agrees to that on the E2?
Yes.
But if they say that we need, that there you want a crosswalk across the, across the, the grass right over there, then we're gonna need you to put one, or one right there. We're gonna need you to put one there, and then a path down to there. So that's our second option.
So is this an action item?
Certainly. Penalty item.
Well, I think after this project, you two can start a consulting business. D and B consulting. You guys would really rock it.
Do you know what time on February 2nd we'll be meeting with the Town of Farmington?
7:00 PM.
PM, okay.
I will entertain a motion pending the township's approval.
Okay.
If anyone wishes to make that motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. Motion in second. Any questions or discussion?
This is great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
Yay, go for it.
Yeah, good job.
Good job. That was pretty easy, huh?
Well, I can work standing on that side of the table. All right, we'll move on to Section 8, Meetings Attended and School Visits. I would ask that, while there were a number of us that did attend the WASB convention in Milwaukee, that perhaps we hold some of the conversations on that for a workshop at a later point, as opposed to today's meeting. But certainly, if there are any other school visits that someone wishes to bring up, Mr. Paul Minsky?
Um, I, I stopped into the high school robotics club and, and watched, take a look at what they're doing with, with their robots. And their, their competition this year is they have to build robots that pick up, um, small balls like this, and it has to load them in a, some kind of projectile device. And then there's little flags that they have to hit, either red flags or blue flags, and they have to knock them backwards. And then you get scored on, on how much, how many flags you get. And one of the participants, Grant Foss, he's a senior this year, he's been on the robotics team for three years now. He is already qualified for the state based on his programming of his robot, which was very clever. He's using a, a sensor that determines where the flag is and whether it's a red flag or a blue flag. So the sensor takes the video of it, and his robot will literally sense where the flag is. It will use a rangefinder to back the robot up. So when his projectile goes, it will exactly hit the flag. And based on his programming, he won, um, a trophy for this. And there's, that's over the three years of the robotics, this is the fourth year. It's, it's our third trophy that we, that we received. And that's a big deal to get a trophy. Most of the trophies we got before were mostly like participation, but this was a legit one. It was in total programming. And I was looking at the code, and it's an amazing piece of programming that he did. And they, they've done real well in that one tournament that he went to that I talked to him shortly after. Out of the 50-some teams there, he had the fourth, he was the fourth best scorer out of all the 50 teams. So, and he made it to the, to the final round. So, they've been doing very well.
Awesome. I attended four of the talks that the author and illustrator, Jarrett Krososki, gave. The evening one, and then three of the student ones. They were fabulous. What a wonderful event. And I do want to convey that Sue Abrahamson, the children's public librarian, said, "It was so wonderful working with the school district's librarians on this project, and they really look forward to doing more of this in the future." It was so interesting to see the different ways he presented information to the K-2 kids versus the 3-5 and the, the, what, I'm trying to think what I missed. I think I got, I got, I got the high school, but I didn't get the 7 and 8s. But it was, it was really an extraordinary day. And quite, because of the snow, quite a test of the author's stamina, I think. But it was lovely, and...
I was lucky enough to go to the middle school one, and he was fantastic. It was just fantastic. And he was giving his talk, and all of a sudden, he stopped. And he looked down, and he said to one boy, he said, "I appreciate you reading." He said, "That's great. You should read all the time, but not while I'm talking." He said, "I come here to teach you something. So throw away your book and we'll go on." And he did. He was just fantastic, just great.
And a lot of his message was, just keep working. You know, it takes work. You don't succeed. You don't get told, "Great job." You don't get, you get a lot of rejection letters, and you just keep doing it. It was a lifeline for him.
Okay. I came to the high school, you were at the high school one.
Yeah, it was.
He was good, wasn't he?
Yeah, it was an incredible kind of message he was giving to us.
Yeah, yeah. Just to follow up, I did go to the same one. I, I actually went over to the middle school and visited with a number of teachers. Mrs. Holtermann, she was working with the giver they just finished, and was talking, the students were talking about, doing some themes and discussion on the book. Mike Walshman, I went and visited for quite a while, and he was talking with his 6th grade students about tiny houses. And of course, he starts his class, having to walk him through starting class, with a joke. He always has a book of jokes. So, you know, of course, I had to jump in. He said, "You got any jokes, Mr. Bear?" Of course, I had to throw one out there. But his first joke was, "See if you know," now this is 6th grade, um, class, "Why are baseball players poor sports?" "Because they're always stealing bases."
Oh.
Of course, his students are, they're the same reaction, "Oh," you know. But anyway, we talked to them about, and actually, we got into quite a long discussion about... But anyway, we talked to them about, and actually, we got into quite a long discussion about, uh, he mentioned, I was on the school board and, "Do you have any questions for Mr. Bear?" And they said, "When are we gonna make up our snow days?" So we had a long discussion about that with them. They had some good ideas about taking some days off of a break or adding at the end, whatever. They're very respectful. We had a nice little chat. And I stopped in, uh, Joel Kemford's class. They were working on the difference between dial, uh, analog and digital in terms of science experiments, uh, not just clocks, but why it was changed over and all that sort of thing. So it was interesting. And I saw a whole bunch others. But I, I am gonna, in deference to what you said, Steve, I, I am gonna talk a little bit about, uh, something that came up at the School Board Association meeting, because I was your representative for our delegate assembly and we didn't really talk about that. So I just wanted to mention three things real quickly. There were three resolutions out of about twenty-five that required, uh, quite a lot of discussion and debates and, you know, a little bit of testy at times. And I just thought I'd mention those three just because they're important. First one had to do with community schools. A lot of discussion about community schools. And, uh, we have talked here about, of course, our charter school and the big question came, came out, "What's the difference between a charter school and a community school?" Because, see, they seem to overlap a lot. And, um, and that was a, quite an interesting discussion because there were a lot of different definitions. But, uh, those districts that have community schools, and most of them are larger, larger districts, but a number of smaller districts are sort of putting in for, um, some funding that's available for community schools. And, and the, the definition seems to be primarily public schools that allow their buildings to be used, um, for services that are not usually rendered during a school day. Social work, dental work, medical work, um, those kinds of things in which their buildings are open for that and community members could come in during the day or after hours. It's an interesting concept, something that we, uh, they call them wraparound services, something that we will probably become more familiar with as we, as things go, go on because they're becoming more and more popular and there's funding out there for them. Second thing was gifted and talented, which has been around forever. But a lot of districts and the discussion came about funding for gifted and talented. And the big discussion was what district's, uh, definition of gifted and talented is. Some districts have, uh, a definition and apply for money, which they receive, but then use it for what other districts might be considered to be regular programming because the state does not have a very good definition. Rather vague, rather general, so people are putting in for money and receiving it, but then others don't think that they're using it properly, so therefore, you know, we need to get a handle on. That was, that was quite a long discussion. A lot of districts obviously have gifted and talented. Some of them are quite different from each other in terms of what they, what they, uh, offer. And finally, probably the most hotly contested one, it's something that we may or may not come into, uh, come into our district, was legislation which allowed school districts to prosecute, uh, charges against any individual who intentionally conveys a threat or false information concerning an attempt to use a dangerous weapon or, uh, uh, like a, a bomb scare. And the original definition that these, the proposal rather, um, allowed prosecutors to bring felony charges against. That word felony, uh, resonated with a lot of people in that room of five hundred people, um, in a negative way. And so there was a lot of discussion about, do we want to put students who are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, who call in a bomb scare, um, and, uh, put a felony charge on them, um, right away, or at least possibility. So, um, the proposal finally, uh, went through, but it re, it, uh, took out the word felony. So it just allows prosecutors to bring appropriate, the appropriate level of law against something to that effect. So the word appropriate was inserted rather than a felony because there were a lot of people who thought, gosh, um, you know, it's pretty harsh to use a felony for a young, young person. Not to say that there, there aren't reasons where that might be appropriate, but.
So it could be, but it's not necessarily.
But it was, it's, it's, so they just took felony out and put appropriate. But a lot of discussion on that. And the final thing I, I need to tell all of you or show you to, um, I, uh, I went to the, uh, the Blue Ribbon Commission on Public Funding Strand. And, uh, I know Mark was there for part of that. And our local assembly person, Luther Olson, um, and Joel Kittens, who is the assembly chairman, has spent eighteen months going around the state, uh, looking at recommend and making recommendations on how, the best way to do school funding. At the end of that meeting, our representative, uh, Luther Olson, encouraged school boards, most of us there were either school board members or administrators, to help him to encourage the rest of the legislators to do something about these recommendations. He, he kept saying, "We need your help." Um, because, he said, "I, I, the recommendations they make in here are really wonderful recommendations for school boards," uh, for the most part. So, to that end, um, I drafted a letter, um, and I would hope maybe that I could get the rest of the board members to sign it because, uh, it's to our local representative, Mr. Kevin Peterson, asking that he would, uh, look very favorably upon the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding and adopt some of the immediate net needs that, um, are coming forth by Mr. Luther Olson. The three that are coming up right away, and we'll be seeing these in the news, a built-in annual cost of living in terms of state funding. That's the number one thing that they think we should all, or they should, they're pushing. Because every year, we all know, we have to wait till we see whether we're gonna get more money or less money or whatever the case. But he said that they're working real hard and everybody seems to think you need a built-in cost of living. Nothing goes down in terms of our expenses, but yet, we, we don't always get the same amount. Secondly, schools with declining enrollments. There need to be, needs to be more aid. Every, uh, out of the school districts in Wisconsin, four hundred thirty-five, over three hundred have declining enrollments, but yet, we don't recognize that in terms of the school funding. And thirdly, uh, more money to help the rising cost of special education. Those were the three that he kept saying over and over again, "We're gonna work out this legislative, uh, session." So, I drafted a letter that, uh, uh, if you would like to sign, that just asks Mr. Peterson, because I didn't think the proposal he sent is Luther, he's already pushing these things. But he said, "Your local co, your local assembly people, we, they need to hear from you and, and know that you're interested so that I can then try and get the other legislators." So I'm gonna pass this around. It just highlights just what I said. If you'd like to sign it, that would be great. If you don't want to sign it, I understand. But it's basically just what I said. It's pretty formal, um, without anything else, um, to give it. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings and other activities. We have our March twelfth regular board meeting, uh, that will be at five fifteen, weather permitting. Recognition?
Uh, yes, this week is, uh, School Bus Driver Recognition Week. So, uh, heartfelt thank you goes out to all of our drivers at Gold Right Way for transporting our students safely, both directions. Bus drivers, as I've mentioned a number of times, are usually the, the first face that our students see and often, uh, the last face that they see at the conclusion of their, uh, of their, of their day. So, thank you to our bus drivers. Next week begins, uh, National FFA Week. So, uh, there'll be some more information and opportunities coming forward to celebrate FFA Week next week.
This is a reminder, the FFA breakfast is Tuesday.
Tuesday, I believe, if I'm looking at, I mean, right now, I don't know why. Yeah, I believe it's Tuesday.
Seven to eight thirty.
I will try to stop anybody after being made at like that morning, so, uh, if others. If others count, uh, telling it, uh, they always put on a great breakfast.
Good food, always good food.
Student Services Committee report.
What did we do? On January ninth, um, we had a Student Services report. We had a discussion, uh, about the, um, food service, um, and some current concerns about, uh, um, the contractor Chartwells. And Carl's not here today. He, uh, reviewed the financial performance of the district and, um, he had a concern, um, that we have exhausted, um, ninety thousand dollars foods, uh, the food service fund balance. And Chartwells also recorded additional fifty thousand to fund the tran, well, we would have to, um, move fifty thousand dollar fund transfer, uh, balance to the one fifty accounts because they're a little bit, um, short on their money. And it had to do with, uh, the, in the previous years before Chartwells, we could get access to supplemental food, like the, um, the government national, uh, supplemental food. And, um, Dar Flugard was diligent to find certain commodities like butter or flour or sugar or those types of things at a greatly reduced, uh, price, um, by buying independently. But contracting out with Chartwells, um, they were at, at the beginning, were not able to get access to those heavily discounted surplus items, if you will. And, and it, and it took a while and then finally Chartwell got into the system where they could, um, access some of these, these foods for a cheaper amount. But it took a while for that to actually happen and, uh, the food costs went up by, by quite a bit. So some of the things aren't quite balancing out now a little bit like, like they expected. So, um, there was some discussion as to, you know, why that happened or how that happened and we were kind of updated on that. So, um, that is, is an ongoing thing. I think that, um, uh, that is a discussion that we're gonna have later, I think, on the food service of, of whether we're going to continue with Chartwells or whether we're gonna go in another direction. I don't, that has not been determined yet, but we're just getting some preliminary information on that. Um, we had a discussion regarding the transportation program, um, how the, uh, new service with Right Way is going. And everything seems to be going, um, pretty good. I think the, uh, the, this, the, there were a couple little pickups with certain individuals and bus ride times being a little bit longer than they should be. And I think that they worked out some of those issues. I know Greg was just working with that. And I think that they resolved. But, uh, overall, uh, everything is very good with the Right Way. It's been, it's been, um, higher for the, a contractor for the district, so. Early dismissal Wednesdays, um, they were talking about, um, how it's going with the teachers and, um, Dr. Neen and, and Mr. Flaton, um, were real pleased with, with what, what's been trans, transpiring on the Wednesdays. I know I've gone around to talk to administrators and teachers and I, I think it's been a home run. A lot of people and a lot, some districts are struggling with, with whether to go in this direction or not. And I, I think we're kind of a little model out there for how it should be done. And I, and I think it's been very helpful for getting teachers on track, getting students on track. And it's been a good time for, uh, the people to collaborate with each other. Something that didn't really happen, uh, very much when I was teaching because we didn't have that. So I think that's been good. And that's basically what we had to discuss. I don't know if there's anything I should mention to that, Greg?
Nope.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Uh, moving on, next section on the agenda is administrative.
Yes, uh, Steve, uh, Aaron did not, is not able to join us today. Uh, however, we've got a request for a, uh, preliminary approval of ukulele club.
And nobody smiles when we say that.
Ukuleles are a thing.
They are, apparently.
When you see a ukulele, how can you not smile?
How can you not smile? They're hard to fight.
So I, I, I see that, uh, no one's here. Do you know how many kids are interested or involved in this?
Actually, yeah, they, they have quite a few. I actually talked to Aaron about this just this morning. And they actually have, at the moment, eleven regular attendees. And Aaron herself has a lot of extra ukuleles. She's loaning out people to borrow. Um, and it's, I have attended once and it's actually quite a nice program they have going on. They just learn music and this play together. It's, it's good for bonding and it's just overall the nice program they have going.
That is so cool.
So do we need a, a motion to accept it as a, on probation?
I have a question just about projections for future costs in terms of the, when he, when Aaron was talking about supplies. And I'm sorry, I, I didn't anticipate that his schedule wouldn't allow him to be here this morning. But would that include purchasing ukuleles and what kind of costs might those be? This sounds very exciting to me. I just would like to get a better handle on, um, what happens if, as we anticipate, this goes really well. And they come back.
It appears, uh, in one of these documents from Hannah Baumgart, Hannah Sluscher and Erin Harger, that, uh, for the current school year at least, they don't foresee a financial need. Students own their own, uh, ukuleles at this time. If the group expands and in the future there's a desire to travel and compete, then, you know, there may be budgetary requests. But at this point, they're not asking for a budget allocation. They're just, uh, wanting to, uh, seek preliminary probationary approval and then, uh, see if the club takes off.
Okay, well, I would move approval of their probationary.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Okay.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question about, um, the, the procedure for new activities, for onboarding new activities. This is new. Um, is this the general way that extracurriculars would go about being initiated into a district? I thought it was interesting that it all goes to the school board, I mean, to the student council.
Yeah, I can't, uh, I can't really speak to that and I don't have that historical piece, I guess.
That was in his last presentation that he made, is that that was the process he wanted to get into is to bring it, and you guys expressed that he wanted to be in on the probationary status, not wait until first year was over and get it done. So, it'll be brought to the board twice, probationary and then if it sticks, brought back again.
I have a vague memory of our approving probationary status with certain things.
We have.
But this is school council.
Yeah, this is the first time that I recall the school council.
The student council having the say in yea or nay. Which is good. But it was interesting to me because I'd never seen that, that format before.
Some of the athletic clubs have come in as clubs before they've become teams. You know, they grow them that way. But yeah, this is the first time it's been implemented.
Student council, which is good to give them ownership of, you know, their school.
Okay, we did have a motion passed for approval. Okay, any further discussion? Uh, okay, second Fri- Friday in January enrollment.
This is just, uh, just an update.
We didn't vote on it yet.
No, I'm sorry.
We did.
No, I was ready for vote.
No, it's ready to start.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, second Friday in January enrollment.
It's just an update for the board, for information only. Uh, the number of, of bodies was, uh, two thousand one hundred and forty-three. And, uh, when you calculate the FTE, that number, of course, is, uh, dependent on, uh, for example, our four K children don't count as a one point oh, they count as a point six. Early childhood as a point five and so on. So that number of the FTE is, uh, two thousand seventy-five. Those numbers, of course, are used in calculation of, of state aid and, uh, they do fluctuate, uh, over the course of the year.
How does, how does that compare to the, uh, third count of September? Isn't that, uh? Slightly up?
It's up?
Slightly. And so is there a ba, is our state aid, is it based on the September number or the January number or both? Both?
I just want to, uh, make a comment on, since you mentioned the point four and the point six. One of the, uh, at the, uh, let, uh, the delegate assembly, one of the proposals is to change that from a point five is it, again, for summer school to be considered to be, um, full-time. In other words, one. So you can add that in for reimbursement purposes. And that was, that was passed unanimously. So, maybe in the future, there will be more money available for summer school programming for our. for our students, I mean more money to us for the students, something like that.
The next item, as you will recall, our Director of Student Services, Ms. Markon, has submitted her retirement and the board has approved. And so we are in the position right now where we are putting the vacancy out for public consumption and we have updated the position description and so we're looking for board approval for this new position description.
Could I ask what significant changes there have been to, I printed out the old, the job description that's posted on our website, but what are some of the changes that are in this?
Certainly. Ms. Markon, would you like to address that? I know a lot of it, a lot of it was taking out antiquated language, language that's not typically used in EEN, for example, is, is no longer the terminology that we use for students with disabilities. So.
So focusing a little more on discipline throughout the district of dentrancy has been added to this position for student records.
What about qualifications? Were there any changes in qualifications from the time?
The same.
Pretty much the same.
Was anything deleted from the old description as the, apart from language changes, anything removed? So it would be addition of new things. So it's an additional responsibility.
And does the application suggest not only qualification in terms of degrees, but years of experience?
Three for.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
Three for teaching or if you go down.
Experience as a special education teacher.
Go down further.
Oh, yeah, these are years of special education teacher. Okay.
So we're looking for approval of the job description.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Same.
Discussion.
And this is going out or has gone out?
While the vacancy is posted, I'm not sure if we've updated the position description.
No, I didn't want to update it until it's approved. Just have one question. Could we, if you don't mind going back to the qualifications, I, I noticed in our old one it says such alternatives to the above qualifications as the board may find appropriate and acceptable. Is that still, is that catch-all?
Go back to it. I don't believe it is.
Item twenty-four. Pardon me? Item twenty-four maybe?
Did you, did you have a thought on that saying?
I just, I, I just want, I wanted to bring it up in case it would be helpful to have that.
Well, I don't think part of the challenge of that is if we don't have, I understand the benefit of it. However, there can also be drawbacks in the ambiguity of it.
Yeah. I'm fine without it being in there. It was more just a desire to make sure we're doing this intentionally and not.
Well, and the other part of that is if there's deviation, it does specifically have to come to the board for that evaluation. I'm not sure who on the board is specifically qualified to know what the substitute for this is versus a special education experience, for example. I just break that up. I'm dismissing what you're saying, Greg.
I understand. And item twenty-four does, well, the new one does address that issue within administration also. So I'm fine not having it. I don't withdraw my support.
Other questions, concerns?
Mr. Neen, what, what's the timeframe on this in terms of the processing process?
Well, vacancy is currently posted. It'll be out there for about a month. So we'll be convening an interview team around the middle of March.
With the intent of getting somebody, at least a named person, by when do you think?
Well, certainly April and May seems reasonable.
And they would start on July one?
They would start on July one.
Other questions? Concerns? Comments? No motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Disagreements? Thank you.
The next item, four A through four F are the school handbooks. This item in the past had been, been brought to the board for their approval after the board, after the handbooks had already gone to print. So we moved them up on the timeline. The handbooks have not gone to print yet, as I understand it. And we have, as an administrative team, we have taken great care to ensure that the handbooks have all of the required statutory notices placed within them wherever it's allowable. So we certainly still have some notices that are required as a class one notice at the beginning of the year. Some of the notices you'll be able to find on our, on our website in various places, but handbooks are another opportunity to communicate with our, with our stakeholders.
Will you be seeking approval, formal approval then? Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Then may I observe or suggest that item B, the CEC handbook, that's the prerogative of the Governance Council rather than the board and I would respectfully add that be removed from our list so that the Governance Council can remove that. I appreciate having the coney of it. It's very helpful to know that.
Rhonda, do you know if the Governance Council has reviewed the?
Yes, it was approved before this.
Okay. Thank you.
The name look, look at it each year, improve it each year. I'm just wondering, there are basic things that have to go in all, like non-discriminatory statements. So that would be the fact that Governance Council will make sure those things are in there so that our, this board doesn't need to see it.
It's wonderful. I think it's helpful for us to be able to see it because we might get questions just as district representatives. So I appreciate having it here. And it's nice, it's good to know that the Governance Council has also reviewed it. It's always helpful to have more eyes looking at it that I just.
Yes, you had to tell me of many type of mistakes that time. So thank you.
I haven't seen a copy of the high school one either.
It's been posted, I know, just recently, but.
Item E is not for our approval.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion as a whole on item E four, A through D and F?
So if we made a motion, we would make it for all of those with that exception?
We certainly can handle it that way or we can handle them one at a time. Either one would accept.
I'll, I'll take, I'll make a motion that we accept the school handbooks with the exception of E Z E C.
Second.
There is a motion in second. Further discussion?
I just have one question, just looking at pages, what I know, I don't know if the changes were, is that, is that corrected that the high school school day has been extended from three oh nine to three fifteen?
That's by, we've got a policy. Yeah. We've got a policy that dictates what the school day is and I can certainly bring up the policy if you like.
Yeah, cool. I noticed this year it's three oh nine. I, I take it, isn't it? The end of the school day?
No, it's three fifteen.
Is that three, so that's new this year? I guess I missed that one.
That changed last year.
That did, yeah. Okay. So, and Rhonda?
I just had one observation. I noticed that all of the, the handbooks, except for the CEC, refer to student slash parent handbooks, really like family is the term that might be used instead of parent. That would just be a suggestion because it's not always the parent who is.
That's a good point. Other questions or comments? If I could request, whether it's getting the old and the new in Word format or a red line version, if I get it in Word format, I can create my own dot compare, but I would appreciate having that so that I can, it's difficult to have them next to each other as many pages as it is and see what changes are supposed to go to work.
Certainly.
Thank you. There is a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Items A through D and F are passed. The AGR report?
I'm going to turn it over to John and Rhonda.
So the AGR report by DPI requirements, we have to report half within the school year with our progress from K one, two, and three. And it's relatively similar as far as what we're measuring from year to year. We're on a five-year contract. The big difference that you'll notice here is we're using the I-ready results instead of the STAR results just because we moved to the I-ready. But our progress is just for all kindergarten, first, second, and third. One change for the WLC is we didn't progress, we didn't assess the students until the winter timeframe with the I-ready. We wanted to give the students some time with their teachers so we could see some of the growth right away. And so the kindergarten is a little different than first, second, and third as their statistics are put in here for winter. You'll see in first, second, and third, there'll be a call to winter comparison as to how they have their progression.
So John, because we don't have those documents to compare, so where, where are we this year from your perspective in terms of comparison?
I think we're pretty similar. I, eighty-five percent of first graders, for example, have met typical annual growth is what we're looking for. That's a pretty high number. That's a pretty large growth that we're looking for, but we thought we'll put that in there anyway. We'd like to see as many kids make their annual typical growth. And that is measured from a norm reference base from the I-ready. And I think we're relatively similar where we usually are. It depends, each class is a little bit different, but I would say very comparable, comparable to each class.
So the ATR is a five-year grant. So what we had to change from the previous year is just the name of it, assessment that we're using. Now we're using I-ready. And the only difference you'll see between WLC and Chain is the kindergarten assessment. I used a screener that we use locally with the FAW scores rather than I-ready. But measuring the same thing from the WLC.
Have we, have we seen, have you seen since we've had our 4K in place, any changes of any significance that this, these would, would result here in some kind of a change?
I would say not necessarily in the numbers here, but in school readiness. You could definitely see the students that have gone to 4K when they come in on that first day and know they're ready for school and the school atmosphere seems to be a little bit less of a transition for students, which means learning can start a little bit sooner. But I can't say that the numbers are, can show that.
And that's what we want to hear because our goal in 4K is social innovation. It's not academic. We don't even have any, any academic goals for the end of 4K other than to be able to write their name. They're all social academics. So you do that, you can see that difference, is that?
Couple of questions. One is a question about the percentage, the targets, the baseline growth. So looking at WLCs in reading, it's ninety-five percent of kindergarten students will meet typical annual growth. When we go to math, in kindergarten, it's eighty-five percent in, in reading and math for grade one.
Right. So what I, what I did said is I looked at the scores and how they perform and they perform, perform pretty well in reading. So I upped it to ninety-five. I think they can reach that goal. So I thought that was a legitimate goal based on where they were in the winter testing. They did very well. So I just wanted to see if we could reach that.
Okay. And then Rhonda, if I'm reading this correctly, the section that is in black and white for us, is that Chain School?
Chain Elementary.
Chain Elementary. And so there, your baselines and growth aren't described in percentages.
No. We didn't work together on that.
No. They're in terms of competencies?
Yes.
Or, okay.
And that's one of the purposes of mid-year reports is to be able to change that. Like John Chain, I'll take it to ninety-five. A mid-year report should give you a good gauge if you can change your goal to be stronger.
By and all, looks relatively positive. Any concerns?
Wouldn't we be getting another report then? Is this year and year end?
Good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six.
Oh, boy. The last administrative item today is preliminary calendar adjustment for the current school year. February eighteenth was originally intended to be a calendar development day, but the administration is recommending that we make that an instructional day. We have alerted our families that, you know, that this request was going to be coming to the board and that we would be seeking approval to make that adjustment. It's not the only adjustment that we're going to have to make this year as we've had six days now, I believe, and we had three built into the calendar. So we're constantly discussing what the other options are going to be. However, we're not going to bring a final recommendation forward until we know under the full scope of what we have to deal with. Said another way, we're only halfway through February and, you know, there's still plenty of winter left. So.
You don't want to tell me, are you?
Well, last year was April. So we're hopeful that at the March meeting, we'll be able to begin to shape the rest of the calendar.
When is spring break scheduled this year?
I believe it's the middle of March. So our intention is to bring forward some, some adjustments that would be implemented when we return from spring break. The high school is really where, where we're tightest. 4K, we're, we're a little bit short, but I think that we can, we can recoup that time. It's, it's, it's really the high school. And so one of the options that we're considering is to add a minute per period to the high school day, which translates to starting the school day eight minutes earlier. So not, not going to require any significant transportation changes because the buses, I think the last bus arrives at seven forty-five. So if we started school at, you know, seven fifty or, or thereabouts, we would be able to recoup the time necessary, provided we don't have any additional days that are missing. So.
You would hurt her, huh?
I took the opposite of a rain dance. I, I don't know.
Abby, just for your information, if you don't already know, we're obligated as a school board based on number of minutes that students have, not days. Everybody thinks it's days, but that sort of went out, out the window some time ago. So if like Mr. Neen said, we add one minute to each class or five minutes a day or eight minutes, whatever, that might make up for a whole day that we lost in overtime that we might lose. So just so you know, when you talk to your fellow students.
Yeah, I do have one suggestion though. Would it be possible to add it on to the end of the day? Because coming to school, I see many students arriving just as the bells ringing, like the, like the dismissal bell. And I think that it would cause like more strenuous students to, even though it is only like eight or 10 minutes earlier, that would be eight or 10 minutes earlier. They had to get up and get ready and get moving. And I know for a lot of people who live on farms such as I, it's, it is feasible, but it would be slightly difficult in order to add on that extra 10 minutes onto the morning. So if you could add that on to the end of the day instead. But I know that causes problems like sports and stuff.
For the administration, we'll look at the various options.
Yeah. And, and we have.
Yeah, and we have considered that already, Abby, and the difficulty there is because our buses are shared routes, it would result in having a number of buses sitting in the parking lot full of middle school students for about twenty minutes. And, you know, that presents other opportunities and challenges.
Same.
I think any input that you may have, although the administration is absolutely willing to hear and absolutely.
And maybe they could split it a little one-on-one. You never know. I mean, there's options.
What is our Easter break? Do they have the Monday after Easter off?
Yes. No, this is Good Friday.
Just Good Friday is here.
Okay, because I know one of the districts around, I saw a memo that they just took that Monday.
Yeah.
And the kids are coming back to school on that Monday instead.
Must be next calendar week, yeah.
Okay, we've got a recommendation to approve February eighteenth as a day of instruction with proposals to come with regard to the other things that may be needed to be recouped.
So moved on to February eighteenth, second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we will look forward to the recommendations and, as I said, I'm sure the administration will be more than glad to hear from the student perspective as well. Monitoring. I'm sorry, there was item out from that's District Superintendent slash Administrator search. I have very little update at this point. We, any such search is pending approval of a consent agenda. There was a meeting this morning assuming that if the consent agenda is approved with representatives of WASB, Superintendent Search Service, a couple of their consultants. We have been, I have been in contact with two other search firms. We will give more information as we move forward about how we will be selecting. But the board is fairly aware at this point of general methodology that'll be used regardless of who we utilize because a majority of the search firms use very, very similar methodology as to what we heard proposed this morning. So with that, I will not go into any more detail, especially since we have not approved a consent agenda as of yet. Then we'll move into monitoring.
Hey, that would be me, and I'd like to use my computer down here.
Okay, today what I'd like to do is present to you an intensive intervention model that we're using at Wopaka County District in special education. And in special education, the role of the special education teacher is to provide services to students with disabilities by providing strategies, tools, services in order for them to access their grade level curriculum and to be with their age level peers as much as possible. For a lot of our students, it's almost one hundred percent of the day. But for other students, depending on their needs and the severity of their disability, the amount of time engaged with their age level peers is different and is lessened. But we try that attempt as much as possible to keep them engaged with their peers. We do have some students who really, really struggle socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and we get very, very creative in how we meet their needs and provide them their education in order to be successful. With that, and I turn to, we have a couple, an ex-principal and a principal here, and they can feel this pain, that sometimes it's very, very frustrating because it becomes quite a challenge in the traditional school setting to meet the individual needs. And as creative as we become, which may include their own little classroom, partial days, you name it, we try it. We try whatever we can to keep them engaged as possible. Sometimes it just doesn't work. So we have an alternative program here in Wopaka that we do use for some, a very, very few amount of our students. But the Wopaka County Alternative Program is a program that we have been utilizing for over twenty years here in Wopaka. It is a program that was originally, originally, a program that was, implement that was a combination of all the school districts in Wopaka County as well as DHHS. And together they build funds and services, people to participate in the program in order to meet the needs of some of our students. Throughout the years, the DHHS has decided to public services as well as funding, but the districts, most of the districts throughout the county have wanted this program to be reported of it, the significance of it, and have continued to fund this program. And I brought it up this year with you because the program is being moved up and now they moved to the older district office. And it's going really well. And not only did they move the sixth through twelfth grade program here, but they added a second through fifth grade program. And knowing that this program is not in our community and people, and they're renting from us, that it's important for you to really know what this program is all about. I had invited the lead teacher, Brandy Leonard, to attend today and present, but unfortunately, because of the change in our schedule, she was unable to attend. But she did, she does have a presentation that she did a voiceover with the slides that will be next.
Hello, my name is Brandy Leonard, and I'm the lead teacher at Wopaka County Alternative Program and Wopaka County Alternative Program Elementary. And I would like to tell you a little bit about our programs. Both programs are an alternative education school operated by CISA V for students with significant emotional and behavioral needs. Students are referred to the program when their school district has exhausted all of the interventions that they are able to rely in the school building, but the student continues to struggle in a way that disrupts their education or their peers' education. Oftentimes, students have a history of trauma or mental health needs as well. In some cases, a school district feels that the smaller setting of WCAP or WCAPE is a better fit for the student to get their feet back underneath them and move forward in their education. We serve students in second through twelfth grade from seven area school districts. Wopaka, Wyomiga, Fremont, Manawha, Tomorrow River, and Iowa School Districts are part of a consortium agreement with CISA V. Troy County and Wild Rose have purchased floating spots at the schools for their students. Hello, my name is Brandy Leonard, and I'm the lead teacher at Wopaka. The elementary program serving grades two through five is new to Wopaka County Alternative Program this year. Intervention has the best chance of success that earlier can be implemented. By serving younger students, we can provide the supports needed when they are most receptive to change and minimize the negative impact their disability has on their education and self-work. There are currently four elementary-age students enrolled in the program. We operate with a ratio of two and a half students per staff member. This allows us to offer a high level of supervision to maintain safety when student behaviors may begin to escalate and become aggressive. But more importantly, it allows us to intervene early when we see students beginning to escalate. We are able to closely observe students to offer them coping skills, breaks, or move students if needed before behaviors go too far south, and we are able to take advantage of teachable moments as they occur. Staff are also able to devote a lot of attention to students and build a strong relationship with them. Relationships are keys to student success. The elementary program at WCAP is focused on the emotional needs of the student. We work closely with students to help them identify their emotions as they occur and teach appropriate individualized coping skills. We work with students to identify the size of their problems, understanding that all problems can be resolved, and finding appropriate peacekeeping solutions to problems. Some of the tools that we use to do that are actively practicing social skills, meditation, and building up the student's self-esteem and guiding them through a positive mindset. We, of course, take advantage of every teachable moment the student offers us. As we teach math, reading, science, and social studies, we work on students learning how to be academically appropriate in the classroom. We're also able to tailor our standards-based curriculum to the needs of the particular students we have at that time. The advantage of having students enrolled in our off-site program versus in the regular education setting is that we are able to devote a very large amount of time to social emotional learning, which is what the students that we serve need. Some of the tools we use are the Zones of Regulation curriculum. The Zones of Regulation teaches students how to identify their emotions and implement coping skills to, quote, "get to green." It teaches children that all emotions are normal and okay, but we need to know what to do when we feel them. Students reflect on their zones throughout the day so that they can learn to pause and take inventory of how they're feeling and to remember to use those coping skills. We also work one-on-one with students in the self-management techniques throughout the day, and a therapist from Catopa Health School Based Health Services runs a short mental health-based group each week and meets with the students for fifteen or twenty minutes. Being able to focus on the good choices and positive things that a student does throughout the day is critical to getting them to make those choices more often. We believe that students need to be able to see their success. We make sure to give a high amount of praise to students versus negativity. They will always get way more positive interactions than negative interactions. Students are able to learn, earn tangible rewards so that they have evidence of their positive choices. They can physically see it. One of the ways we do that is using a classroom economy to teach the value of good choices, hard work, and sneak in some financial lessons as well when a student shop at the school store or learn how to save for bigger items. We begin each day with a clean slate and make sure students know that it is never too late to make a good choice. Every moment is new. The Wopaka County Alternative Program Elementary takes advantage of being able to utilize a flexible schedule. The elementary schedule offers a lot of room for flexibility based on what students need that day. Students attend for six hours, Monday through Thursday. We have shortened class subject times to meet the students' attention needs as well as provide lots of opportunity for breaks and movement to help with self-regulation. Students are encouraged to take short sensory breaks or movement breaks when they begin to feel overwhelmed. We focus on academics in the morning when students are best able to meet the academic demands, and then social skills in the afternoon when they're more tired and need some low-stress interactions. All of our interventions, individualized plans, and programming decisions are based on evidence. Each student has a daily choices log, which allows us to track student needs and progress. We are able to keep data on how much of the day students are available for learning, which we consider safe, willing to accept direction from staff, and completing tasks as requested. We are also able to focus on how students do during transitions, verbal interactions, controlling their physical interactions, social interactions with others, and their classwork. The scale that we use goes from a one, "try again tomorrow," to a four, "I did it all of the time." It is simple for students to understand how their choices impact their day. It's easy for parents to understand, and it adequately lets us keep data on where students are in their progress. When we review the data, we are able to pinpoint times of the day the student may struggle, particular areas of behavior they may struggle with, and we can go back and see what interventions were successful and which ones didn't go so well, and adjust our plans accordingly. The second program that we have under our roof is the original program, Wopaka County Alternative Program. It has been running for over seventeen years. It serves students in grades six through twelve, and it's based on the same principle as I mentioned for the elementary program, which is geared towards the needs and abilities of older students. There are currently seven students enrolled in sixth through twelfth grade. This program has a ratio of three students per staff. Again, with a lower number of students per staff, we're able to provide a safe environment as well as provide early and frequent interventions for student behaviors. We can also work hard at developing relationships with students, which are very important during this critical time in their lives. Just like with the younger students, we focus on identifying emotions using appropriate coping skills, problem-solving, and social skills. Older students require a more age-appropriate approach. We focus a lot on mindfulness, growth mindset, real-world problem-solving, daily living skills, and being involved in community service. Math, ELA, science, and social studies always take place in the morning, with social emotional learning, social skills, and life skills taking place in the afternoon. The social emotional learning that older students participate in is based on mindfulness and social skills. Students are encouraged to pick a strategy such as yoga poses, labyrinth meditation, or quiet activity like a word search or find it to distract their thoughts when needed. We also find engaging ways to practice social skills and good sportsmanship. A therapist from Catopa Health School Based Services spends one day per week in the program. She teaches a forty-five-minute group to the older students weekly, as well as meeting individually with several students for therapy when their families have chosen to participate in that component of the program. Educational content in classes is based on student needs and state standards. We're able to deliver individualized as well as small group instruction and provide students flexibility in how they can demonstrate mastery. If a student doesn't like to write, we may offer them a choice to complete assignments a different way. Lessons are often tailored to student needs and interests to help them experience academic success. The class periods are similar in length to the time they would experience in a regular school setting. The daily point sheet for older students is a bit more complex. We are able to pinpoint areas and needs monitoring five categories: conflict, language, attitude, work habits, and thinking or choices. Students are rated on a scale of one to nine in each area for each class, and a seven is considered appropriate classroom behavior. There's a rubric outlining point values for various behaviors so students know exactly what points their behaviors earn. Students are taught that they have control over their choices and earn the points that are appropriate. It's up to them to make the good choice and earn the good points. Our ultimate goal is to do what is best for the student's academic success. In most cases, we apply our magic, which can also be known as knowledge and expertise in students' behaviors, and students continue to make improvements and they are able to reintegrate back into their home district school. Typically, this period is an average of eighteen months and includes a time where students mainstream in the regular education setting for a class or two at their home district school to ensure that they're ready to return. to ensure that they're ready to return. Sometimes, though, the district, student, and family decide that WCAP is able to meet the student's needs in a smaller setting, and the student will remain at WCAP. Typically, these students mainstream several classes and attend WCAP for the remainder of their day to receive the support they need to be successful. So how the magic happens? It happens directly and indirectly. We have some key beliefs and techniques that we are able to implement in a small alternative setting. All staff recognize that all behaviors fulfill a need. We teach students replacement behaviors and work with them to identify and communicate what it is they need, want, and feel, and we teach them the appropriate self-management skills to get their needs met. We are able to monitor student choices and actions closely with the daily point sheet. Students learn their choices and actions determine their positive or negative consequences. They are in control. We have enough space and staff to spend a large amount of time on teaching coping skills such as taking breaks, making before-acting, appropriate communication methods, appropriate social interactions, and making the better choice. Teaching students mindfulness is integral to their success, so many of our students are focused on the past or the future to a point where they seldom make decisions focused on the current situation when they first arrive. Learning how to accept their emotions and manage them is their foundation to being successful in the school setting. A lot of the specific smaller points that we teach fit into a bigger picture. We focus on social skills and build community at the same time. Building community within the school, going out into the community to provide service, and inviting people in from the community to speak or share all give a sense of purpose, belonging, and realizing self-importance. We have the flexibility to devote time to students' academic needs. While we strive to teach grade-level standards for each student, if they're operating at a fourth grade, if they're operating at a fourth grade level and eighth grade, we're able to devote time to teaching the lagging skills to help them experience success and gain confidence in academic skills. They move to I-can versus I-can't thinking. We build self-esteem and independence by teaching life skills, work skills, independent living skills, and personal finance. Most importantly, we give them a reason to change. We plant seeds for the future by setting reachable goals with students and working side by side to achieve them. Working with students to determine a path after graduation and helping them get on that path. They realize that this is possible. The program at Waupaka County Alternative Program and Waupaka County Alternative Program Elementary works. This cute little guy you see here presented to us at the beginning of the school year. Last year, he was in his school, the WLC, for only a couple hours a day. His behaviors were significant. There was a lot of safety concerns. He was violent, there was physical contact, hiding, refusal to do work. He was not completing any academic work when he was with the teachers without a lot of frustration and troubles. Now that he has been with us for five months at the elementary school, he is attending full days at our program as he has since the first day of school. We have seen a significant reduction in unsafe behaviors, a notable increase in the use of coping skills and self-confidence, and he is beginning to make gains in reading and math. But the biggest thing is the smile you see on his face. He finally believes that he can do it. He can do the hard things, he just has to try. The young lady you see here is about to graduate from our program this year. She is a senior in high school and really excited. She came to our program two years ago. She was truant, missing over 70% of school days at her school before her parents pulled her out to homeschool her. She refused to attend school and refused to complete work. She had debilitating anxiety and depression. When we got her her sophomore year, she had zero high school credits. She's worked really hard the last few years, and now she's going to be graduating on time. She's attending school regularly. She enjoys being at school. She's mainstreaming two classes in her home district school. She's become a positive role model for others, reaching out and speaking for NAMI. She helped start a teen support group in Wailega. She has employability skills, and she's even been offered a job through one of our community service partners when she's old enough to work there. The program has made a difference in her life, for sure. This gentleman will also be graduating this year. He's been at the program for a long time. He's one of those cases where everybody knew that the small environment, good relationships, and good supervision was what was best for him and his education, so he stayed with us long-term. He wrote us this letter this year, and it says, "Dear WCAP, I'm writing this letter to tell you how much of my life was changed by you. When we first met, I was an annoying little seventh grader who made stupid jokes that made no sense, and now I'm an adult who says more refined jokes. Thanks to you and all the teachers for understanding and for teaching me obviously, but more than that, and most of all, for being my friends." These thankful words and longtime student. And he signed his name. The program has worked well for him as well, and we're happy to see him happy.
Not sure there. So these are a couple, these are some examples of some of the activities that they do. They try and get outside, do as many hands-on projects as possible, just meeting the diverse needs of the students and engaging them as much as possible. Here is, they've been doing some volunteering in nursing homes, and their latest one that they started participating in is in Kahoots at the Kahoots. And kids absolutely love going over there and feeling proud that they can be contributing to the community. And here they do some cooking skills in the old lounge that we had there. They're also responsible for a pet, a school pet, as well as cleaning on Fridays, Friday mornings, they have to clean the building. We don't have any janitorial staff over there, so they are responsible for that. And then they do participate in community activities for rewards like going bowling, they do Valentine celebration, they have social times, so where we had the important meetings in the past, they set up games and activities for the students to participate and get along with them.
You think we had fun in that room before?
So that, unfortunately, Brandy could not be here just to say to herself, but they're really doing a great job. They absolutely love the building. The students that were in Wailega absolutely loved the building. They feel so proud of the building. There's a lot of destruction in the building at Wailega, it was a very burned-down place. And I was really nervous, thinking, uh-oh, what's going to happen to our nice facility here? And they were very respectful, but... Our district has two elementary seats that we purchased and three middle school, high school seats, and all of those are built with this type, where the kids are doing right now.
We're thanking our thanks for putting together the slide show as well as the voiceover.
Maureen, you mentioned, it was mentioned in here for both elementary and high school that there was intervention with Katalpa Health. Is that part of our contract with our district?
No, that's a separate one with CISA.
So CISA has picked up the tab, if you will, for their...
We're purchasing that directly, but the cost of the program...
Yeah, okay, but that's not related to the ones that we are...
Okay.
So Maureen, you obviously have input in this. Do all the student services directors from all those districts have input in it too? I mean, how does that work?
Right, we all communicate. We communicate with the staff there. Wendy Hartlidge is the director of the program, and we have meetings about three times a year, and then the superintendent's at meetings at the same...
Just had one yesterday.
Yeah, so to get updates on the programs. The students are still our responsibility, so we hold their individual education planning meetings each year annually and bring in our specialized teachers to share points. And like Brandy had mentioned, we really strive to bring the students to the... Feed the distance as possible.
This question may be more geared to Mr. Neid. We've leased our building to CISA, is that correct?
Correct.
Has there been any discussion or talk about them down the road wanting to purchase that building?
I think it's probably premature, but I think it's certainly a conversation that the board will want to go back to them, especially after the program has continued to develop this elementary program. I think the stronger the program becomes, the more appealing it will be for them to purchase.
Is there a presence in the building covering all our classes?
Yes.
Do we have to redo that contract at any specific time?
Yes.
Is it a one-year?
Oh, boy, I don't recall if it was a one-year contract.
So that must be coming up fairly soon then?
Probably, yeah, I'll take a look there.
Okay.
Does the school have full capacity now, or do they have...
They still have a couple slots available at the elementary level. The elementary level is slow filming, but it was good because one of the individual subjects there really needed a lot of time. And they have a very specialized program, and we have recently just picked up more secondary classes.
They do have capacity at the secondary level too?
Yes, yes.
And then obviously, the connection to board monitoring is not only student achievement, because many of these students probably wouldn't have continued with their education, but also through the citizenship and the responsibility that you saw is obviously another major focus for the staff.
Do the students that are from the Waupaka District, did they show up on our count?
Yes, yes, they show up on our count. They show up, they take the state tasks, they're still part of our district.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Moves assigned to item 10, the consented general. Is there a motion?
Moves to accept the consented general.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Certainly.
Motion in second, any discussion? The roll call?
Kansas?
Aye.
Lee Hattler?
Aye.
Mark Goldis?
Aye.
Sandy Roden?
Aye.
Freddie Manus?
Yes.
Steve Dunn?
Yes. I'm glad everyone for our motion to adjourn.
The move?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pouse? Thank you very much, everyone.